At this time, we will call our special call meeting to order. The first item is the approval of the agenda. I'd like to switch and do the Washington Harbor District first, and then do the elementary school project.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Brian, you or Anita are going to do the Washington Harbor District?
Yes, sir. I'm going to do that one. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll take the board back about four years ago, to March of 2020. The Board of Commissioners agreed to engage with the Harbor District Alliance to apply for a North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund grant. They were going to use those funds to outfit the Harbor District building, to put in sprinkler system, HVAC, and work on the commercial kitchen that was there. I'm not sure if any of you have been over there. All that stuff has been installed. In fact, I think last month in December, Mr. Woolard came and inspected. So, that grant, as my understanding, has been closed out, so we're good with that. At the time, John Jesso, who is the interim director for Washington Harbor District Alliance, was talking with Mr. Woolard and Rodney, and Rodney said, "You guys need to apply for this again. There's a lot of money out there." And they looked favorably upon folks who have gotten this grant before continuing those things. So, they were very interested in it. I think they were too tight on the timeframe, though, with it being turned around. They found out recently that because of the hurricanes, the hurricane in the western part of the state, the deadline had been pushed back to apply for that grant. So, last Monday, John called me about it and said, "Is it something we might be able to do again?" And I looked at it, and I said, "I'm not comfortable doing that without the board at least knowing about it, because there's some sign-offs y'all would have to do later." And I didn't want it to either be that, or I'd have to poll you and come back and ratify it. Since you had this special meeting called, I wanted to add this to it, to ask you about it. So, they're essentially doing the same thing. They're asking to do the same thing. The grant's actually due tomorrow. Michelle Rose is writing the grant for them, and will submit it on their behalf. They'll manage it just like they did last time. There's no county money involved. I am not sure how much they're applying for this time. I think they applied for $230,000 last time, and they got $100,000. But it's to, again, help finish out that commercial kitchen for that upstairs area. What I would like is your approval for us to work through that process with them exactly like you did last time. So, nothing unusual about it, and no county dollars are involved.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation from Brian as it relates to the grant being very similar to the one that was approved before. I entertain a motion to...
I'll have that motion.
Okay. We've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I haven't had a second. Any questions or discussion? Okay. All those approved, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. The next item on here is the new elementary school project, the need for the additional four acres. And I don't... Every... Do you want to kick it off, Brian?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to kind of give the timeline on what I know. So, I was at a JCPC meeting on Thursday, the 9th, and at that meeting, the city attorney, Franz Holcher, attends that meeting. And he said to me, he said, "I think the school board and the city have worked out an agreement." And I said, "Okay." I wasn't aware of that. So, I came back, and so we talked a little bit about what that was. I talked to the chairman that day, and you requested that we sent out a notice to the board, and you wanted to call a special meeting to discuss that. So, my understanding, and the email that I sent out to you, it laid out the two options that the city and the school board had agreed upon. My understanding from the superintendent was that on Friday, the 10th, the school board met and agreed to that memorandum of agreement, and then Monday night, that memorandum of agreement was approved by the city. You got that right after I got it. I got it last night, and forwarded it to the board last night. That was signed by the mayor, that essentially says they will agree to these two options, pending which one the Board of Commissioners agrees with. And then this morning, as soon as after I received it, I sent to you this information, which has the plat and the revised, or not the revised drawing, but the drawing that shows where the retention pond is on the city property that they need for the four acres. That was sent to you this morning, as soon as I got it from superintendent. And then I printed this one out for you, just so you would know about the four acres that are at the park that they're looking for, for the swap, if the swap is what ultimately occurs. And you'll see how that's laid out. It is not for the entire parcel, as I think y'all are aware. You see where the gravel area is. My understanding, where that gravel area is, it essentially serves as a kind of a parking lot area. That's part of what the city's looking to include. And according to the city manager, it would be their intent to pave that and stripe it so that people could park in that area and not have to park on the side of the street and block up the area when people were playing in the park. So, that's what I have. The county attorney and I met earlier today to just review the legal pieces of all this, and she can certainly speak to any of those that the board may have. But my understanding is that the city and the schools have come to an agreement on one of two things, either outright purchase or a transfer of property between them. The statutes require that if there is a transfer of property for school real property, if school real property is to be done away with, first of all, it has to be declared surplus. And in doing that, the school system would have to say, "We no longer believe this is needed for school purposes." They would declare surplus. The statutes require that any real property first goes to the Board of County Commissioners for their option to say, "Yes, we want it." If you were to say, "Yes, we want it," you've got to pay fair market value for it. It's really interesting, there was a Supreme Court case in North Carolina relating to that, that even, because there's a statute that conflicts one of the other statutes. There's a statute that essentially says governments can work between themselves and transfer property and do things with any terms that they feel they ought to do. And we've used that statute before, some things we've done. But when it comes to the school system, it's different. And that was laid out in a Supreme Court case, actually, with Kinston and Granger Stadium, believe it or not, and how all that worked out. So, if you were to say, "No, we want that piece of property," if the board would declare surplus, and you say, "Yes, you want it," then you would have to pay them fair market value for it. If you decline it and say, "No, we don't want it," then that gives them the option to proceed to dispose of that property along the lines of the statutes, which, again, would require a general acceptance that those two pieces of property are roughly equal in value, so that they could be transferred between the two of them. So, that's what I can tell you, with my limited knowledge of the statutes, and the county attorney can certainly speak to anything that I've missed. Thank you.
I see our superintendents here, as well as some of the board members. Anything, Matthew, that you would like to add to how we got to this point?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for your consideration this evening. So, how we got to this point, just to back up, needs-based public school award, February 7th, and from there, RFP process, ultimately, the board selects Jimmy Height and Height Associates to design and build. So, in short, from information we were reading, we felt as though that we own the four acres of land, especially since we have been servicing that land for 30 to 40 years. So, lots of conversation around what was in front of us, but we learned that we did not own the land, and we communicated with the city of Washington about not owning the land after a professional surveyor did the work and let Jimmy Height know that, in fact, we don't own that land. So, in terms of the timeline, that's May going into June, and then at the July 10th, 12 o'clock, Wednesday, July 10th, 12 o'clock, progress monitoring update meeting, the city's mayor, mayor pro tem, and also the city manager attended that meeting to listen to conversation about what was going on with that four acres of land. And so, we had conversations about how they could help us. And so, those conversations occurred over the last five, six months, to the point of where we are now. And so, initially, it was a potential donation to potential land swap with Coogler Field, but you have to get the heirs of the Cooglers to agree to it, 23 heirs, very hard to track down in that regard. One was not really proactive to it at all. And so, then we had greater conversation around, could we actually purchase it, what other land swap? So, conversations electronically, through email, through text, conversations face-to-face, have led us to this moment right now. In short, we learned essentially around May, beginning of June, that, in fact, we do not own the four acres of land, and the city of Washington has been very thoughtful in their conversations in terms of how they would like to partner with us in that regard.
So, the two options on the table are outright purchase of four acres for $500,000, or to deal swap, or trade...
Yes, sir.
...of equal value.
Yes, sir. And the Board of Education voted on that last Friday, and the city of Washington voted as well last night.
All right.
Well, of the two, which way did the Board of Education vote to go for?
The board actually voted on having two options, leaving it in your court. The board does not favor one or the other at this time.
Okay. Well, there's only one I'll support, and that's the swap. That makes good sense, because when we give up school property back to the schools, we generally don't get anything for it, or they don't get anything for it much. There's a playground on it. There's no need for the schools to have a playground there. It would be a benefit to the city of Washington, and I can understand a swap. Eventually, half a million dollars will come back against the taxpayers of Beaufort County. And right now, we don't need to be incurring that expense.
Anyone else?
Yes.
So, there is a park on the school property already that the city's already built?
I think in collaboration and combination, the city and the Board of Education have worked on that together.
Was there an MOA or anything with that?
There is an agreement with the city, yes.
Okay. And this swap will not impact or affect that any negatively, or anything like that?
That's a question only our attorney could answer, who's not present.
So, Commissioner, so there's a joint land, or a land use agreement. And if I recall correctly, and again, it's been many a year, it was either already in place when I went to work for the city, or we put it in place when I was with the city. Dr. Phillips was the superintendent at the time. And essentially, it was an agreement that would allow the city to use that as a park area, and to put infrastructure out there, and look after it. And it's been that way, I think, since at least 13.
And that's true. And the city actually contacts us when there's families in the community or others who request to use the park for events, then, in fact, the city reaches out to our office just to confirm that our calendar is not using that area. And so, there is conversation, ongoing conversation in that regard, in that partnership. That's true. And just to be mindful, the Board of Education is prepared with their $250,000, so that is not a concern. The board has that money.
Is there a motion to trade swaps?
I'll move that we do the trade with the city. The city's going to be on both sides of the issue. When the city gets the property, I think that agreement, they will be on both sides of the issue, so the issues will disappear at that point in time. I move that we do the trade.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject something?
Yes, yes.
And I'll let the county attorney speak to it, if you need for her to do that. But I don't think that the motion is actually to approve the swap. I think the motion is to decline the county's, that this board would decline its first right of refusal to receive the property when the schools declare a surplus.
Yeah, I agree. We'll put the motion in proper order. And that is that the Board of Commissioners decline the offer of the property, and that with the understanding that in our declining that property, that it's going to be used as a swap with the city. And if the Board of Education should decide not to swap with the city, then we would revert to our position that we were in before the motion.
Yeah. I have a question. I mean, concerning that caveat that Hood just implied, would that, and this could be for the attorney, manager, would that be for the entire parcel, or just for the four acre parcel? Okay. And that is known. We don't need to specify for just the four acre parcel.
So, my understanding, and I think the school system can speak to that, because they've had these conversations, again, if you look at that parcel, that ortho of the parcel, my understanding, and you can confirm that, is the city is looking to, obviously, you'd have to subdivide that parcel, so that it would be taken out. And what the city is looking for is to include in it the gravelled area that is between the park and the gym. And they're going, what the city manager said to me was, they plan to pave that and stripe it so that people could park there, and they would put gates on each end so that they could keep it from being a cut-through back and forth, and to limit access if they needed to. But there would need to be some action taken to parcel that out, but that's, if you look at that area, that's kind of what that shows.
So, Hood's motion is set in stone that it is conditioned entirely upon the trade being made, and it only being for a four acre parcel of the entire piece of property? Okay.
Any other comment? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. We're down to the second option, and I'm going to make a motion that we purchase the four acres that's adjacent to the existing, I think it's 28 acres, based on the survey, for the purchase price offered by the city of $500,000.
28 acres?
It's adjacent to the 28 acres.
Oh, adjacent.
Adjacent to the 28 acres. Is there a second?
With the school board paying $250,000 and the county paying...
Well, that's where the $250,000 came from. I've already talked about it. I didn't know where the $250,000 came from, now I know.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Well, I have some discussion. I sit here as a county commissioner, who was elected to protect the property and the money of the citizens of Beaufort County, and I am completely bewildered that we would take a piece of property that the county has, does not, the school system does not use, and the county cannot use. The value to the county is zero, and that we have an opportunity to trade this for four acres of land that other commissioners are willing to spend a half a million dollars for, which is grossly overvalued. I'm completely bewildered at what four of these commissioners think they're doing. I think they were caught red-handed backing up this thing, and it was made, that information was made available to the public, and that they're more interested in punishing other commissioners that want to do the right thing than they are in doing the right thing for Beaufort County.
Anyone else?
I'll take it. Well, I thought from the beginning that this was a lane that we didn't need to be in, and I stayed out of it, and I think most of us stayed out of it, and I'm glad we did, because I want to congratulate the city and the school board for sitting down and coming up with a plan, and not only a plan of, you know, how to deal with this, but also how to pay for it. And they're going to be, I think, through dispersments, through sales tax. So, it's not like it's coming out of our coffers, and if what does come out will be returned. So, I think this is, anybody that's involved with building at this level knows delays cost money. And we can get this thing done through tonight. I think Wimfield will probably start on it at midnight. They're ready to go, and I'm ready for them to go, and I cannot wait for the day that we are there for the ribbon cutting for a safe, modern school. It's going to look gorgeous up there.
Other comments?
Yeah. So, you guys negotiated outside of the meeting, $250,000 for the county, $250,000 for the schools, which, I remind you, we're going to end up paying their $250,000 to eventually. I don't know where else it comes from. It comes from taxpayers of Beaufort County, especially when it comes to capital projects. So, we're asking the county taxpayers now and in the future, at some point, probably in very near future, to pay a half a million dollars, when actually, you could give up four acres. Now, I'd like to know why you four people in the center-left coalition come together, you know, to swap power, you know, swap votes, hold power over the county, half a million dollars. That's another half a million dollars you're putting on top of this price tag, when a simple, a very simple title search would have told the school board, I guess this lawyer up in Durham, we never see or hear from, this very simple title search would have affected this whole process in the very beginning, because we know that when you do anything with land, planning is the most important thing you can do. And I have, from the very beginning, I've said, "You've got problems with the planning. You're building this school on the lowest point of the lot. This is the collection point where water comes." I know. I've coached soccer out there many years. Some games, we couldn't, some matches, we could not play on that pitch. We could not. It was too soggy. Now, that denotes two things. Either it shouldn't be used, or you're going to spend a lot of money to shake that ground up so that you can make that school work, if, in fact, it does work. I mean, it's only going to be a foot or two outside of the floodplain, even when you do that, even if you can keep that water off that lot, since it is the lowest point of the lot. I think it's untenable, incredible, downright ignorant, that you guys will spend a half a million dollars of the county taxpayers' money when trading four acres would suffice. I don't understand your logic. And I'm going to end this by asking, please, would you explain it? And now, you say we've got the center-left coalition going here, we work together, you know, cross the aisle, spend taxpayers' money, share power, we do all these things. But I think you owe an explanation to the taxpayers of Beaufort County why a half million dollars has to be spent. Now, Frankie, you've been in this for the last number of years. You were working on this, finally brought it to us last year, talked to us about it. Why, as someone with a real estate license, why did you not understand that a simple title search would suffice to make a better planning decision some time ago? You can answer that as well. But please answer why a half a million dollars coming out of our treasury, once again, and this might not be the last time a half a million comes out, or a few hundred thousand here, and a few hundred thousand there, eventually, it becomes real money. At some point, explain to me why you will not make that trade. That actually makes a little bit of sense to me. And yeah, I had to think about it a little bit before I go along with it, but it made a little bit of sense.
We've already voted.
Mr. Chairman?
I have voted.
You have not voted, Mr. Chairman. There has been no vote. We've been in discussion mode. You might have voted in the back room, but you ain't voted here.
Well, let me make sure the public understands, I gave up my real estate license, so I'm not a Realtor.
It's a good thing.
My understanding was, is that the trade would probably end up in a delay of the project, and what I understood was it would require both pieces of parcels being appraised, and that if there was any difference, the city would probably end up having to cough up additional money, or us, depending on, you know, which one was a higher under the state statute.
Where in the law does it say an appraisal is required if we do a free, open-handed negotiation and decide the properties are of equal value? Why do you need an appraisal?
Am I wrong, Brian, in...
So, again, I don't want to speak for the county attorney. What I will say is, is that, and I don't mean this the way it may come off, but that's really not y'all, please forgive me, Commissioner Richardson, it's really not y'all's concern on that, because it's the city that's making the trade with the county, with the county Board of Education. The city has got, the attorney for the city has got to say, "This is an equal swap." Because I asked him that question, and he said, "We believe it is about equal." But the board's action here today is simply to say, "We either don't take it, or we buy it." You know, we first right of refusal. It's on the city and the county Board of Education to comply with the law that says they should be, that the school board should get fair market value for that property. It's on them to do that. It's not on y'all to do that, because it's not y'all's piece of property. Does that make sense?
Oh, it doesn't make sense. And the reason it doesn't make sense is because commissioners have the responsibility for coming up for the money for this trade. So, we've got a dog in the fight, whether you want to admit it or not. I want to say one other thing here, too, since this issue's been raised, and Commissioner Walker raised this issue. There have been allegations, and things have been said, that the commissioners would do this, and the commissioners would do that, and all commissioners have been polled, and they would never do this or do that, and that an email was sent from the county to the city that said the commissioners were not going to get involved in this trade and in this negotiation of doing this deal. I want to tell you something, guys. Don't ever send an email saying, "All of the commissioners," when there's not been a vote in front of the public, and the issue has not been presented to the commissioners. Don't ever do that again, because we're going to have some serious problems if that ever happens again. A vote of this board is required for anybody to speak for the board, not somebody in the back room that suddenly decided, "Well, we're not going to get involved in this." We are involved in this, because we provide the money. The $52 million for this project comes through the county commissioners, and there is a reason for that. And people want to. We have four commissioners here, we have some people with the school board, and we have some people with the county manager that keep wanting to drag us out and say, "You have no responsibility for this. You don't have a say in this." There is nothing that is any more untrue than that.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yes.
Okay. So, Commissioner Richardson, I've not had any conversations with any elected officials about this, with the city or the schools. That's not my job. I've talked with the city manager about what exactly it was that they wanted out of that piece of property, because I didn't understand it. I wasn't sure. I thought that maybe they wanted the entire piece of property, including all the buildings. That was what I asked. The email that I sent to the city was because the city manager reached out to me and said, "We're having a meeting with the schools, and we would like the city, the county manager, the county chairman, and the county vice chairman to attend that meeting." And I reached out to the chairman of the board, and the chairman of the board said, "We don't need to be involved in that." So, I sent an email back to the, oh, wait, let me finish.
Oh, no. Go ahead. That I want to say.
Yeah, I am. So, I sent an email to say to them, "That's y'all's negotiation. That is not our negotiation, and my chairman has said that we're not going to that meeting." So, that's what that email was, and there was nothing untoward about that. I can't consider, I don't know what kind of conversations y'all have had as a board, but I can tell you, I haven't been in those conversations.
You're exactly right. You have been in those conversations. There have been no conversations, and the chairman is not empowered to speak for the board unless there has been a meeting and an issue presented in public, and there has been a vote on that issue. If you, and this is what my complaint is, and other people's complaint, too, the deals that are done in the back room are illegal and dishonest and unethical, and that nobody has a right to speak for me unless the issue has been presented in public in front of the whole board and has been voted by the board. Then you can speak for the board, and you can say, "These commissioners either went with it, or they didn't go with it." But we've got, I'm not sure that you and the manager understand what you're supposed to be doing, and it's not running this county in the back room.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yes, sir, Brian.
So, Commissioner Richardson, the invitation was not to the Board of Commissioners. It was to the county manager, the chairman of the board, and the vice chairman of the board, and that is what we responded with. Now, if the invitation had been to the board, then the... board, then the board would have been asked to do that, but they were not. And we stayed out of it, because that was a decision that they needed to make amongst themselves as to how they did it. And, and you can say that you understand the law, but the law is, you don't have control over that. All you can say is, we want the property. If you, if you surplus it, the county wants it, and you gotta pay them fair market value. Or you can say, we don't want it. That's the only, that's the only thing you've got involved in this. You, you don't get to get, I mean, you, you don't get to get involved in the negotiation with that. It's not the county Board of Commissioners' responsibility to do that. It's between two existing boards. And that's what they've done. They've come to an agreement. They've asked y'all, do you need, you know, either buy it or refuse the, the right of first refusal? So that's what they've come to you to do. That's all that is.
That's precisely what I'm complaining about. Between you and the chairman, you keep disenfranchising this board from its responsibilities, its fiduciary responsibilities to the public. You went out, informed an illegal committee with a meeting out of the county, and the chairman appointed himself to the committee, and you cut this board off from having any say, any oversight whatsoever in the building of a new school. There's a reason why the money comes through the commissioners. There's a reason why. We control the money. We have a say. Right now, you have a situation that is somewhat very corrupt in which all these commissioners are voted to do is to write checks based upon approvals from the planning, from the school board to pay for the school. We don't know what we're getting for a school. We don't know what we're teaching. The proper studies were never done to build this school. The DPI cannot produce the studies because they've been asked for. In the back room, a decision was made to build a new school. Chocolatity was totally disenfranchised. There was no studies. There was no look at alternatives that are required by law. So we're talking about some pretty serious issues. And let me tell you one other thing that you may not understand. There is no such thing as an invitation to the chairman and the vice chairman to attend any meeting that the rest of the board members cannot attend or are not invited to attend, because that is what the regulations say. The chairman and the vice chairman have no special powers other than to conduct a meeting. An invitation to the chairman is an invitation to every commissioner here. You're shaking your head, and you should be informed. That's the corruption that's in the county government right now, and that's the corruption that's gonna have to be rooted out. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to respond. So Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson, the action that is in front of you is the action that this board is to take. You, you have the ability to debate that. You have the ability to discuss it, and you ultimately are the ones who are voting on that. How that piece came together was negotiations with school board members, city members, county commissioners maybe. That's the way the process works. And, and no action, no action has been taken by anybody, and nobody has bound any board to anything without it being in a public meeting, which is what it is today.
And the reason we're here, TW, you can come up here and confirm this if you would like to, just so that every commissioner understands it. TW called me to let me know where they're at on the negotiation, and I said, TW, we will have to call and have a special call meeting. So that's when I got the county manager involved. That's when we sent out the notice, and that's why we're here.
We called our meeting on Friday as an emergency meeting with our lawyer to discuss the MOU. Came out and did a vote and discussion in open session on Friday afternoon at two o'clock, cause bad weather was coming.
Yes.
You say it, Stern. I can speak.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I wanna clarify some things. First of all, I haven't talked to anybody about this agreement, and it's, it's sad that people say that we're making back room deals when they don't have anything to substantiate that there was a back room deal. My decision is my decision, not based upon anybody else. And, and let me just say this. To say that those four acres are swamp land, and the property that they wanted to swap for was of equal value, it doesn't take a brain surgeon to, to figure that out. It is not. And so therefore, I would never go along with something that says swamp land and that land are of equal value, and you should just switch them out. I'm not doing that. I'd rather pay the money. I said it. I meant it, and I'm here to represent it.
I wanna go back when everybody's had another go.
Okay.
Uh, TW?
Yes, sir.
When y'all had that special meeting on Friday, was it Friday?
Yes, sir.
With the attorney from Durham?
Yes, sir.
Did y'all talk at all about title search? What happened? I mean, had this ever come to happen? We don't own this property. We thought we owned. Was that ever discussed?
So while I was in the back, I looked up the GIS search in the back. Previous to, two days after the July meeting, July 15th, it was cordon, it was marked off on your GIS map is when it was registered. That means before then, that GIS map that the county manages had all of that parcel of land is being owned by Beaufort County Schools.
So are you saying that, well, that's a, that's a, well, did your attorney, when you talked to your attorney, did you ask him, how did that happen, and how do we remedy that, considering that it sounds like a survey infraction to me? Maybe Hood could speak to that, but it sounds kinda squirrely. Does it, Hood?
Not really. The surveyor discovered it and brought it to their attention, but, but the...
But that's how GIS evolved.
Part of what's going on here is, these guys do not have the competence to build a school unless you keep throwing money at it, and that's what's happening here, because they haven't done their homework, and they haven't done what they're supposed to be doing. They don't know what they're doing. We've been cut off, the commissioners, those of us who have knowledge of this kinda construction and this, these kinds of things, have been cut off from being able to participate in the process as is required, because the manager, for some reason, thinks as long as the chairman tells him something, that that stands. That is not the law in North Carolina. The board has to function as a board. The chairman has no authority, nor the vice chairman, to, other than to conduct meetings. The law is very clear. All the commissioners on this board are equal. So an invitation to anybody who thinks that they can go to the chairman and he can give them an answer, it's only because he has four-pocket votes up here, himself and three other people, two of whom whose wives serve on the school board. Is he, are you beginning to see an ethical problem here, if not an illegal problem? This is, this is a serious situation of disenfranchisement of elected officials. It is corrupt, and it is illegal. Anytime somebody asks the chairman or the manager a question, it is as if he is asking all seven commissioners at the same time. And for anybody to think that they can make decisions for us without going through that process, they need to wake up, because they may be getting a lawsuit in their ear before it's over with for some very corrupt behavior.
This has nothing to do with this motion.
Go, go ahead.
This don't have anything to do with the motion, but let me tell, let me tell you something. The seven commissioners up here, and, and if anybody called me, they wanna speak to me, I'm going. I don't have to get nobody's permission, and, and I don't think I was chairman and vice chairman to get anybody permission. They didn't ask for a vote. Well, wait a minute, let me finish. I didn't hear that.
I am.
But I, as if anybody wanna talk to me, whether you want me to go to your church, whether you want me to go to your Boys and Girls Club, whether you want me to go to the school, I'm not gonna ask Daddy Hood, can I go? I'm going.
Uh, yeah, I have one question. At what point was the $250,000 split equally, I mean, the $500,000 split equally into $250,000 denominations, when was that agreed upon, and how was that agreed upon? Was that done by you four? Or was it done?
No, no.
An appointment of you four?
No, I'll answer that. So in conversation with what monies we actually have, looking back all the way to July, when having conversation with the city manager, I asked him specifically, what would four acres cost? And he wrote back to me in that communication, $100,000 to $150,000 per acre. And so in my conversation with the city manager, Jonathan Russell, I spoke to him about, in a public school system, trying to build a school right here in Fort Washington, the economic benefit to that. Could we negotiate that? What does that look like? And his conversation was mostly around working in that figure range. And my response, and where $250,000 comes from, is what the balance is on my ledger sheet at the Board of Education and the unbudgeted sales tax reserve. And that is the amount of money that I was able to say to the board with confidence that in fact, I could, you know, execute $250,000 in this moment. So those were conversations that Matthew Cheeseman, Superintendent, and Jonathan Russell, city manager, had in advance. And even when we met with the city, we still had those conversations around what a potential sale would look like. And so I will stand in front of everyone and say, anyone in this room came up with $250,000 except for Matthew Cheeseman, based off of what's on the ledger, at the Board of Education and the unbudgeted sales tax. That's where the number came from. And, and I can assure you that that, that conversation happens in August with the city, city manager, and has been moving along as we've been looking at the Coogler family, working with the heirs. I mean, I've gotta give Franz Holsher a lot of credit for trying to work with the Coogler heirs, a lot of credit. And so to that, I own the responsibility of where $250,000 came from.
I appreciate that, Superintendent Cheeseman, but I'm, I'm more concerned about where this, when this Board of Commissioners started negotiating funds outside of the Board of Commissioners having an open meeting, or even a closed meeting, which this may or may not qualify. But I, I wasn't aware of the money piece. Hood, were you aware of the money piece? Were you aware of the money piece? Did all of the center-left coalition members know of the money piece?
The, the money piece came when Brian sent it. I, options.
It's the options. It's the $500,000, $250 coming from the school system.
Right, I got, I got it, but I'm just, I'm wondering about our side.
Appraisals that were required, they've suddenly gone away, and you're talking about valuing a piece of property, and the city manager and the school superintendent decided what it was worth. I mean, the process on this and springing things on people right out of the blue, and our whole problem all along is only two or three people have made decisions on this school system, and what about chocolatity? They've been totally disenfranchised.
Let's get, let's get back, let's get Zach to the agenda. What's the answer?
When did you guys find out about the $250?
Same time you did.
Yeah.
Right now? TW mentioned that when he...
Cause I heard y'all talking about it, is...
TW mentioned that to me in conversation when we agreed that we, I said, we need to have a special call meeting, and that's when I, when...
So you knew about it then?
Brian, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I follow the question, though. We just, we just wasted time.
All right, we got a question. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn.